I'm calling this meeting to order, and we're going to ask Louis Jones to do the invocation.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us today as we consider the affairs of this our great city, guide us and direct us in the decisions that we make. And when we leave this place, may we take your love and companionship with each and every one of us. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir, all present excluding Mr. Berlucci, who is ill.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session being in accordance with a motion to recess.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of, one, the special session of February 23rd, 2021, and the informal, informal sessions of March 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Move, and call the roll, please.
Mr. Moss, was that you, the second? Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
I will be abstaining on February 23rd, but I vote in favor of the rest of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Abstaining on February 23rd.
And what about the?
Yes.
March 2nd?
Twenty-third and March 2nd. I was, I got married and I fell ill on the second day, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Unrelated.
Not all in the same time.
I hope your wife's not watching.
Yes, please, not all in the same time.
Yes, we do believe in jocularity here at council meetings, yes.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero noting, well, nine to zero, noting Mr. Rouse's abstention and Mr. Jones's abstention. You've approved the minutes submitted.
Thank you. At this point, it's my honor, on behalf of not only myself, but a city council and a city staff and people of Virginia Beach, to read a most worthy proclamation. Whereas R. Preston Midget II was born in Norfolk, Virginia, and raised in Virginia Beach, graduating from Frank W. Cox High School. And whereas Princeton holds a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration from Old Dominion University. And whereas Preston began his career with the family business founded in 1970, Jungle Golf Mini Golf, at age 11. Started with mowing grass and moving the property management, eventually working with dedicated managers and loyal employees to guide Jungle Golf to its 50th year celebration in business in 2020. Whereas, where he married his best friend and soulmate, Kim, on the sixth hole of the jungle golf course on December 31st, 1992. Whereas Preston became a volunteer in 2002 to serve on what would be multiple local community and city committees, commissions, boards, and association, serving as a chair for several and founding member of the Robin Hoods of Virginia Beach, slash Noblemen, and Surfing Access for Everyone, the safe organization. And whereas Preston has been a loyal public servant, dedicating countless hours to charitable and philanthropic causes throughout the city of Virginia Beach for decades, with his volunteer work, including his personal involvement in numerous civic endeavors, which he has led our resort city to be acknowledged as one of the most family-friendly and safe cities of its size. And whereas in 2002, Preston and his wife, Kim, were honored to have become members of the Neptune Festival King's Court, which made them members of the Royal Order of Neptune, a working position as part of a support group for the organizations assisting with leadership, fundraisings, committee chairs, and members, volunteers, and task force members, with that service continued by their son and daughter. Whereas Preston relentlessly strived to make Virginia Beach a better place through this involvement with the Resort Advisory Commission, on which he served since 2002, and walked the streets of the resort strip often, keeping abreast of the city's position on anything affecting the tourism industry, and developing the same responsible and effective opinions and shared them with the appropriate walking the walk and talking the talk of what a community member should be. Whereas Preston served as vice chairman on the board of the Patriot Festival Foundation, acting as the primary liaison to the city of Virginia Beach, providing volunteer leadership and fiscal oversight to the annual celebration of our military, accepting responsibility with a genuine desire to help guide the festival to new heights. Whereas, a long-time and native vision board and executive committee member, Preston served as the Resort Development Task Force Chairperson for five very busy years, keeping his finger on the pulse of the resort city with a broad understanding of its many challenges. Whereas in January of 2021, the city of Virginia Beach lost an open-hearted resident. The community lost an inspiration for compassion, integrity, and leadership. Preston Midget is no longer with us. His life was shorter than it should have been, but every day counted. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, and on behalf of the city, a grateful city council, do hereby proclaim March 16th, 2021, R. Preston Midget II. And let me just say, what a tremendous loss. What a great individual. His legacy will live forward with his deeds and through his family and his friends, who will always share a part of our souls as individuals and as a city. Rest in peace, Preston. Thank you for everything. Okay, will somebody come forward and accept the proclamation? Kim? Kim, please come forward and say a few words.
Get my mask. Wasn't sure if I was going to be able to speak, but.
You're going to be fine.
Like to say a couple things. Mayor Dyer and council members, thank you for honoring Preston and his contribution to helping make Virginia Beach the greatest city in the world. He was honored and humbled. To be asked to serve, he made many friends along the way. Our family is grateful for the overwhelming love, care, support, and prayers from the Virginia Beach community during Preston's illness and fight for his life. If love could have saved him, he would have lived forever. Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you and your wonderful family.
Thanks so much.
And at this point, I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Wood, who proudly spent time in the Virginia Beach Police Department, for another very special recognition.
Thank you. If I can get Deputy Chief Gallagher and his family to come up. As many of y'all know, he is soon to be no longer Deputy Chief Gallagher, but he's going to be Chief Gallagher of the New Bern, North Carolina Police Department. So we have, we've lost a, we're losing a good man from Virginia Beach, and New Bern is gaining an excellent police leader. So we have a resolution to present Deputy Chief Gallagher. So whereas Patrick L. Gallagher joined the Virginia Beach Police Department on September 17th, 1990, and has served the city for over 30 years. Whereas he has served 21 years in a supervisory management role and has led the police department as a deputy chief of the investigative division since 2017. Whereas as deputy chief, he played a significant role in advancing the police department, including implementing a comprehensive approach to large-scale investigative responses, establishing a new task force to address increased gang violence, and leading mandatory citywide training as co-chair of the Inclusion and Diversity Council. Whereas he also served as deputy chief for the Professional Standards and Professional Development and Training Division, and enacted substantial reform, including enhancing recruitment efforts that resulted in increased minority and female representation, developed the Use of Force Board to evaluate serious instances of force and accusations of excessive force, and developed the Mediation Program to enhance transparency. Whereas Deputy Chief Gallagher initiated two murals with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools to enhance relationships between the police department and students. Whereas throughout his career, he has been dedicated to community outreach, including building strong police relationships with members of the African-American, Hispanic, homeless, and LGBTQ communities. Deputy Chief Gallagher established the first LGBTQ liaison program in the police department. He served as liaison to the Human Rights Commission, implemented a homeless outreach program at the Second Precinct, and established outreach work groups and forums with minority and challenged populations. Whereas on May 31st, 2019, the city suffered its deadliest mass shooting event in history. During one of the city's darkest hours, Deputy Chief Gallagher stepped up and managed the executive oversight of the criminal investigation and after-action review, leading the immense investigation with professionalism and transparency while maintaining respect for all those affected. Whereas Deputy Chief Gallagher maintained the police department's Kalia accreditation recertification, which resulted in the first known 100% perfect, one-site services for over 1,200 standards in a three-year period. And that's a big deal. That, that sounds like it's a lot of, lot of jargon, but that is a huge deal. Whereas as a testament for his dedication to exemplary public service, he has continued his education and training by graduating from the FBI National Academy, Senior Management Institute for Police, and the Police Executive Leadership Institute. Whereas he has remained dedicated to training and teaching others by serving as an adjunct criminal justice instructor at Tidewater Community College and publishing 14 articles through local and national media sources on various issues regarding public safety and police work. Whereas his service has been recognized numerous times, including the NAACP Unsung Hero Award, Virginia Beach Police Department Special Commendation Award, the Public Service Award from the U.S. Attorney's Office, and Volunteers of America Called to Care Award. And I'll say, and he also received not one, but two medals of recognition from the C-TAC Civic League from the late George Minns, when he was commander of the Second Precinct. And I think we all know that Mr. Minns did not hand those out without, without yearning them, and Patrick did a great job doing that. So whereas on this day, we honor a public servant who deserves our deepest gratitude and respect for all that he has done for the city of Virginia Beach and its citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Patrick L. Gallagher for his outstanding contributions to our city and extends its congratulations on the next chapter in his career of public service. Amanda's got something for you right there. So you want to let just Patrick?
Pat, can you say a few words? And let me just say, as a point of privilege, what an honor it was working with you, your professionalism, your engagement. I tell you what, you helped not only make Virginia Beach a great city, but a safe city. And for that, we will be always grateful to you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I pulled out my calculator before I walked up and added up the number of days I've worn this uniform, and it's slightly over 11,000 days. Not one of those days did I not feel immense pride to be an ambassador for this city. The former mayor used to say, "This is the greatest city on the planet." And I believed him then, I believe it now. Virginia Beach will always be my home, regardless where I live. A very, very close mentor of mine told me years ago, when I was a lieutenant, before he left, he said, "Patrick, you will have more impact using your humanity than you ever will using your powers." And he couldn't have been more true. Policing. In the police field, we are struggling. But the men and women who serve this department today will rise to the occasion. Over those 11,000 days, a few stand out. One of which is the day I met my wife, Melissand, while I was on duty, and she was running rescue out of Company Nine. And two other days stand out. The day my son came into this world, and the day my daughter Paige came into this world. I leave grateful. I leave with great memories. I'm humbled by what you have given me today and the words spoken by the vice mayor. So I thank you. Melissand, as you know, Mr. City Manager, will be with you until the end of the year. So she will visit every other weekend in New Bern, and I will drive back to the greatest city on the planet every other weekend. So you should hopefully see me around. With that, I thank you, God bless you. And I will always keep you and my thoughts in my mind, and I will continually pay attention to what's going on in my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you and your wonderful family. And next, we get to honor a special person who has received national recognition. A Virginia Beach native and Sabrina Wooton, would you be so kind to introduce this and explain this remarkable achievement? A truly historic, remarkable achievement.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. This is Women's History Month, and we would like to honor a woman who has achieved, as has already been mentioned, a very historical accomplishment. Maya Shaka, would you step forward, please?
Well, welcome.
Hello.
We would like to honor you with a resolution for becoming the first African-American woman to be named an NFL official. And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Maya Shaka, on March 1st, 2021, became the first African-American woman to join the full-time officiating staff of the National Football League. Whereas March is Women's History Month, it is important to recognize the achievements of trailblazing women like Maya, who are leading and leaving their mark on history. Whereas before she received the position with the NFL, Maya spent time officiating in the Pac-12 Conference USA, XFL Arena Football, and in the NCAA Division One Women's Basketball. Whereas she is a health and physical education teacher with Virginia Beach Public Schools, and has been dedicated to improving the lives of at-risk youth at Renaissance Academy High School. Whereas Maya has organized numerous clubs and events to promote diversity, inclusion, and positive behavior. Whereas in 2008, she created the Girls with Empowering Minds and Spirits, GEMS, club which serviced 85% of the school's female population, and worked to boost self-esteem, attendance, academic achievement, and eliminate negative behaviors. Whereas her prominent work in education has been recognized through the I Make a Difference Award, Reading Teacher of the Year Award, and Teacher of the Year in 2014. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Virginia Beach Council recognizes Maya Shaka for her positive contributions to the Virginia Beach students and her hallmark accomplishment of becoming or beginning a career in the NFL as the first African-American woman official, given under our hands this 16th day of March, 2021. I'd like to say thank you so much for your service and your accomplishments in the city of Virginia Beach. And even as a member of this great city, we thank you. And I would like to see if you would have words to say at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman Wooton, for the acknowledgement. Thank you to the city of Virginia Beach for the acknowledgement. I proudly represent this city with the National Football League. I understand greatly what this means, not only to myself, but what it means to my community and what this means to my culture as a whole. I'm so proud to represent Virginia Beach because we have become so progressive at a city, especially in a time like this where things have been pretty unsettling, like in the United States of America. I'm very proud of the steps that Virginia Beach has taken in terms of equality. I'm very proud of the steps that Virginia Beach has taken with youthful leadership. And I'm proud of how we're invested in our youth and within our school system, within the community. And so I'm proud to be a leader of our future leaders of Virginia Beach, and I'm proud to represent everyone in this room. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If I, if I could, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't extend my, my gratitude for you and what all that you have accomplished here, not only here in our city, but throughout our nation. I have seen you officiate games. I've seen you be out there with men my size, bigger than me, controlling the game. And as a former retired NFL player and a lifetime member of the National Football League Players Association, I want to welcome you personally. And the game needs you, we need more like you. And I know you're going to do well, you're a trailblazer. But you know, the most valuable thing that stands out to me is your commitment to our youth within our city and what the things that you have done here at the Renaissance Academy in and out of school. The way you never take any days off, the way you always empowering the youth, men, little boys and girls, men and women, you always empower them. And that is something that stands out to me. So again, we congratulate you, and we thank you so much, Maya, for being a trailblazer for the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well said, Mr. Rouse. Well said, and well-deserved recognition. Thank you, and great career. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. All righty. Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk, will you read the instructions going forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Today we have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. To minimize risk due to the COVID-19 pandemic, limited seating will be available in Suite 5, with overflow seating available in Suite 4, where the meeting will be broadcast via WebEx. In-person speakers will be required to follow physical distancing and safety protocols, including wearing a face covering while in the convention center. For ordinances and resolutions, I will recognize in-person speakers first in the order which they registered. After all in-person speakers have been called, I will then recognize the speakers participating via WebEx. For planning items, I will recognize the applicant or their representative first, whether they are in person or participating via WebEx. All of the speakers will be recognized as previously stated. Speakers participating via WebEx. Please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin your, begin your comments to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. And please do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feet is open at a time, and we will be unable to hear a response. Again, the speakers will be recognized in the order which they are registered. Please note, if the speaker does not respond or if a technical issue occurs, which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next registered speaker. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Dyer to read the speaker rules and then begin moving through the published agenda.
Okay, I would like to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons to which to speak on the item in hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We've had several, we have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed on to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay? All right, at this point, we're going to go forward with the public hearings. They were all advertised on one advertisement?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so I'm just going to read all of them and, you know, right now, and then we'll call for the speakers?
Sure.
Okay. First one, A, 3001 Atlantic Avenue LLC, Catch 22 Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe. Second one, 3315 Atlantic LLC, Lagerheads Camp Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe. C, 13, Thirsty 24 LLC, Atlantic Pints Cafe, Ray Sidewalk, and Atlantic Pacific Cafe. D, Chicks Sea Grill, Chicks Cafe, Boardwalk Cafe. E, Anchi Incorporated, Kakoon Fiesta Cafe, Ray Sidewalk, Atlantic Pacific, Two Pacific Cafe. F, Molinar Liquids Assets 2 LLC, TA, Repeal Bourbon and Burgers Cafe, Ray Sidewalk, Atlantic to Pacific Cafe. G, Beachside LLC, TA, Yacht Club Cafe, Ray Sidewalk, Atlantic to Pacific Cafe. And H, Aqua Investment Associates LP, The Square Rail Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe. Any speakers?
We have one speaker, Barbara Massner.
Welcome, Barbara.
Good evening. Sorry I missed the proclamation. Okay. These cafes, started them in, in the 90s, and they compete unfairly with the rest of the restaurants in the area. 30th and Atlantic, Catch 31, I guess that's why Mr. Thompson was here, I saw him outside. 3315 Atlantic Lagerheads Cafe. Thirsty 24, that's part of the breweries. That's both city and state taxpayer subsidized. Also unfair to the restaurants. And there's two locations for that. Chicks. Chick's, that used to be owned by John Uern Burridge Management, and now Mr. Standing with Waterman owns that. And since many of you get donations from the hotel motel pack and the restaurant pack, I think you should consider abstaining. Pacific Avenue, this is all the oceanfront. Atlantic to Pacific, traffic is a nightmare at the oceanfront. There was just a terrible fatality at 83rd Street. There was a fatality today when I was running errands on General Booth. It was a city stormwater vehicle. You keep allowing things for profit, but not for public safety. You don't address public safety. You approved Chick-fil-A, that's been one of your partners. They have like, there's more traffic for Chick-fil-A and the New Mexican place that was IHOP or IHOP Mexican. There's already traffic there, and during that accident, the police didn't block off the other side of the road, and cars are speeding by. Anyway, I oppose the massive alcohol all over the city. There's three at the oceanfront. There's just, and these cafes take over sidewalks and the right-of-way. So, and there's no oversight. I saw where the, you finally noticed after a year, because I've said it many times, there's only one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Messner.
That's three minutes for each item?
No. They were all advertised as one. That's why I read them all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers for the public hearing.
Okay. At this point, are there any, just one speaker for the ordinances, resolutions, and planning?
We have one speaker signed up on all items. The only item, my understanding, that will be pulled from consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions is number 9B.
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Messner, if you would like to come back to the lectern, and you can begin your comments for each of the items on the consent agenda. The only item pulled from the consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions is item 9B.
Okay. These are the same ones, but I didn't have time to finish, so I will address the fact that there's too many drunk drivers, there's too many crashes, and you're saturating, over-saturating. A couple years ago, the brewery magazine said saturated with studs. Where are the family-oriented things that you're subsidizing for families? Everybody doesn't need to take their children to sit in a corner and their dogs while they drink from whatever hours. Anyway, like I said, almost all of these breweries have been subsidized, and they're even sold in the grocery stores. They're sold outside the state. This is a huge moneymaker for you. And there's three jumbo ABC stores at the oceanfront, and then they take over the sidewalk while they're construction. You're taking away the sidewalks. People have nowhere to walk. It's really unsafe. I oppose these. Okay? Two, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy conditions, Ray closure of an unimproved portion of Singleton Way, South Witch Duck Road, and Princess Anne Road. Like I said, there's so many closures, and you keep approving more and more projects. So, it's just more dangerous, just like the accident today. People were cutting through, and the cars are speeding by. I have video, which I don't have time to bring and upload, but all the police and firemen, they're at risk because the cars are speeding on the other side of General Booth. They speed 24/7, wherever Mr. Jahaney is. You know, I've talked about public safety, and I don't know what's changed. Nothing. When you have uncontrolled growth, you have big city crime, and when you saturate everything with only alcohol, it's not a healthy mix. Okay? Three, declare the proposed location of Tranquility at the Lakes, a revitalization area qualifying for Virginia housing finance. There's been so many abuses of HUD and mixed use. You know, now they're talking about it on the national level, but you've been doing it for decades, ever since you had to stop using eminent domain to take property. So, I think until the pandemic, which, you know, even the shots are being questioned, some of them that people are taking, until the pandemic is over and you get a handle on crime and traffic, I don't think you should be approving new projects when you can't handle the ones you have. Four, this one, you know, resolution to authorize the city manager and the city clerk, they're two different entities, to place a tax or fee increase advertisements for the proposed 2021-2022 operating budget. Like I said, we are taxed and feed to death. And advertising, shouldn't be advertising in the Pilot Beacon. Hardly anyone, it's dropped almost 80% of people who read that. Okay, Ray, short-term rental zoning permit fee, fees. I know you're doing it to help take care of the problems you're having, but you shouldn't have combined all of it together. Communication towers, administrative review, eligible fee, just fees. So, like I said, you can't handle what you have. You haven't paid down the budget, $3 billion and growing. Okay. Okay, resolution, and the city manager has executive assistant, and we have Julie Hill in Communications, and the city clerk has a lot of staff. Okay, five, resolution to authorize and direct the city manager, who's pretty new to the area, to execute a non-binding agreement. Non-binding agreement with the Navy, reference NAS Oceana Future Base Design. I remember a couple years ago when the Navy was going to hire Air Public Works to help clean around the base, as if, you know, we don't have enough. We shouldn't be mixing whatever the NAS Oceana is doing with the city. The city should take care of its own business, and the city should work with somebody to pave Oceana Boulevard. It hasn't been repaved since the 90s. It's only been patched. Six, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Fitlot Inc. and accept $4,010 donation to plan, build, and program an outdoor fitness park at Williams Farm. We have Parks and Rec, and we have Public Works. You shouldn't be outsourcing and letting somebody create a business for only $10,000. Mr. Moss, you know, you used to pay attention to the budget. It's like hardly anybody else pays attention, even though you don't always vote responsibly. Okay, seven, ordinance to establish a new CIP, Capital Improvement Project, Juvenile Detention Center Security Replacement, and transfer $600,000 from the 2020-2021 Human Services Operating Budget to the newly created CIP. You know, if you would invest in the kids in the neighborhoods and patrol the areas like Atlantis, which is now bought by someone else, that's where crime is all the time. I'd like to thank Mr. Rouse as really paying attention, but when you vote for the other projects that take money away from programs for all youth, we can never solve our problems if we only have bids going to certain people, women, you know, have requirements for that. All these groups should have done something about the rigging of the bids, apparent rigging of the bids for decades, because a lot of people have lost. Okay, eight, accept and appropriate 51,600 CARES Act. Where has your CARE been since January and February, when the state issued a warning about COVID? You were still trying to work on the program for 159 different countries that were sending student visas over here. And they were, so you haven't managed the CARES Act money. So, Parks and Rec Operating Budget, Out of School Time Program, your kids should be in school, not CARES Act for out of school. You've had a year to get our kids in school. You have the sports center open. You've never closed the beaches. And, like I said, where's the auditor looking at the money? Okay, B, $135,000, $124 from National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, National Coastal Resilience Fund to Capital Project, 100365, sea level rise, recurrent flooding analysis study, study of marshland restoration. It is insane. You started the Alaskan Road Master Plan, filling in all the marsh and wetlands. That's why there's so much flooding around the Harris Teeter at the oceanfront. I mean, all of those pipes that you had to replace, most of them were 40, 50 years old, and that sewage smell was in the air all the time. So, you're going to plant a few things or raise roads. You should stop the development and stop the uncontrolled growth. You build on the ocean side, you keep building, and the water just goes from one area to the other, all the storm. That's what these pretty fountains are. It's retention ponds everywhere you build, because, you know, there's no place for the water, so you just put it in a puddle, a giant puddle. Okay. C, $300,000, these all add up to a lot of millions. This is a third of a million, Landmark Foundation to the 2020-2021 Public Health Operating Budget, and authorize grant-supported positions, Ray Bay Care Program. If you cared about the bay, you wouldn't be building, overbuilding all over the place. And, you know, we still have a shortage of police officers, and I think it would be great if all the officials and all the city employees lived in the city, paid taxes, and saw the crime firsthand. I think they'd have, you know, a better idea of what's going on in the city and have a little bit more invested. Okay, nine is the one you said you pulled?
Nine, 9B. 9A is what you want to talk about, Barbara.
Okay. Ordinance to transfer $238,000 from the General Fund Reserve for contingencies to the 2020-2021 Planning and Community Development Operating Budget. To be provided to Hampton Roads Transit as a local match and microtransit demonstration project, Virginia Beach West Pilot. It's too bad all the people that used to speak out on the light rail, 100 million a mile, aren't here, because everything is pedestrian. And we need to fix our roads and public transportation for everyone, not, you've had years to work on this. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We do the planning then. Okay, we're going to have the open discussion on planning, and we are pulling items three, and it's eight and nine, Mr. Wood. Okay. Ms. Messner?
Ms. Messner, the only ones that aren't on consent are, under planning, are three, eight, and nine.
On planning, you said the only ones that are, which ones again?
The only ones that are not on the consent agenda are three, eight, and nine. All the other ones are right now on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, you know, this happened before, and then it wasn't discussed at all. So, doesn't consent mean that you plan to vote for it? Are there speakers for all of those except for three?
No, ma'am. The only items that are being pulled from the consent agenda are three, eight, and nine. Everything else at this point is on the consent agenda.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay. Gray Point Cove LLC, variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulation, a lot with, at 3108 Little Haven District, a variance. So, they want to change whatever the regulation was. Like I said, I didn't have time to look through all these, but when it says approval, and this is something I just made mental notes because I didn't have time to get all this ready, or planning, we have a lot of problems with planning. You have the same people, the definition of insanity, which I think you all like because you do whatever you want, is, you know, having the same people do the same thing. Planning is hired to help people put things through. And some of the last things that were discussed the last time I was here, even though people weren't in compliance, or they had rented inappropriately, or without, you know, being approved, they just said, oh, well, they'll fix it. So, I think everybody needs to be more involved in what's being planned, because the city is not able to handle the crime, the flooding, the traffic, the parking, anything. So, this is nothing personal against these people. I just, I haven't had time to look all these up, but people usually have to pay for permits. Okay. I won't read the people's names, but enlargement of enlisted existing dwelling at 228 Cavalier Drive, District 6 Beach. I would love to know how many are at the beach right now. I'm sure total in the city is over 3,000. But this whole thing around the quote-unquote, "We paid at least 42 million..." we paid at least 42 million for the Cavalier. And when they, they took away the parking for Galilee Church and for the Cavalier, the overflow parking, there were two hotels and there were no problems with parking. There wasn't two entire floors of hard liquor distillery with people coming from all areas. And it wasn't 85 residences all squeezed in there. So I think to add, you know, it says nonconforming. Why would you allow something that doesn't conform with the neighborhood and potentially, you know, enlarge it? Who knows how many short-term rentals there'll be? I just hope everyone here who's voting, like I said before, is paying attention and going out to see these properties. There's no way the average citizen can go. Okay, let's see. Miss Virginia Beach LLC.
No, that item was pulled.
That's the one that's pulled, okay. Okay, First Chinese Baptist Church, modification of conditions. Religious use approved in 1961. Do you think what was approved in 1961 applies today? I don't even know what year some of these people were born, but you have to consider the conditions today before you approve something that was approved in, you know, 1961. You have to reevaluate if you really care about the neighborhoods and traffic and everything else. Okay, five. I can't even pronounce the names. Conditional use permit, family daycare in Centerville. Okay, there's a lot of family daycare because, you know, the schools are closed. Some of the rec centers that compete against the daycares for childcare, that's the city competing against private enterprise. You know, a lot of these things that you're approving, like trucks, parking, you know, businesses in neighborhoods, that's a lot of additional traffic. So, okay, six. Another family daycare, Centerville Rugby Road. Okay, I think we need to open back the entire city and let all the cities stop competing unfairly and let the other businesses open so people aren't turning our neighborhoods into commercial enterprises. There should be, I mean, Ms. Wooton and Ms. Henley, you both came out to look at the shopping center with the daycare and the conditions in the Red Wing area. So none of these things have been addressed. And this brings up the health director. If I read correctly, she makes between 200,000 and 278,000 a year. And I don't know if she made more since she was working for Norfolk and Virginia Beach. And you acted so concerned. You know, I said before, she doesn't return calls. The state office doesn't return calls. And all of a sudden, you're frantic to do something, but you shouldn't be spending money. Okay, seven. Conditional use permit, assembly use, Kempsville. Doesn't say what type of assembly. It just says Toya Smith SST Holdings LLC. I can't tell what that picture is. There should be a little bit more information on the the six-page agenda brief because I believe this one was 404 pages. I can't even remember, there's so many. But if we have a pandemic and there's restricted seating, I think some of these things can wait. If our kids can wait to go to school, these people can wait for their conditional use permits. And assembly, I don't, whatever it means, you know, they're going to need parking. And I don't know how close it is to to homes. that's Kempsville, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Wood, would you be so kind to do the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda the following items. Under ordinances and resolutions, item J1, ordinance to grant eight franchise agreements, Ray Open Air Cafes in the resort area, A 3001 Atlantic LLC, trading as Catch 31 Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe at 3001 Atlantic Avenue, B 3315 Atlantic LLC, trading as Lagerheads Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe at 3315 Atlantic Avenue, C Thirsty 24 LLC, trading as Atlantic Pints Cafe, Ray Sidewalk Atlantic to Pacific Cafe at 2314 Atlantic Avenue, D Chick's Sea Grill LLC, trading as Chick's Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe at 701 Atlantic Avenue, E NSHI Inc., trading as Cancun Fiesta Cafe, Ray Sidewalk Atlantic to Pacific Cafe at 1516 Atlantic Avenue, F Moliore Liquid Assets 2 LLC, trading as Repeal Bourbon and Burgers Cafe, Ray Sidewalk Atlantic to Pacific Cafe at 2022 Second Street, G Beachside LC, trading as Yacht Club Cafe, Ray Sidewalk Atlantic to Pacific Cafe at 2607 Atlantic Avenue, H Aqua Investment Associates LP, trading as The Square Whale Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe at 3900 Atlantic Avenue. Item two, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions, Ray closure of an unimproved portion of Singleton Way, South Witch Duck Road and Princess Anne Road, approved originally April 22, 2014. Item three, resolution to declare the proposed location of Tranquility at the lakes to a revitalization area, Ray qualify for Virginia housing financing. Item four, resolutions to authorize the city manager and city clerk to place tax or fee increase advertisement for the proposed FY 2021-2022 operating budget, A, short-term rental zoning permit fee, B, communication towers administrative review eligible fee, standard review. Number five, resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a non-binding agreement with United States Navy, Ray NAS Oceana Future Base Design. Six, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Fitlot Inc. and accept a $4,010 donation, Ray plan, build, and program an outdoor fitness park at Williams Farm. Item seven, ordinance to establish new Capital Improvement Project, Juvenile Detention Center Security Replacement for FY 2020-2021 and transfer 600,000 from the FY 2020-2021 Human Services Operating Budget to the newly created Capital Project. Item eight, ordinance to accept and appropriate, A, $51,600 in CARES Act funding to the FY 2020-2021 Parks and Recreation Operating Budget, Ray Out of School Time Program, B, 135,124 dollars from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's National Coastal Resilience Fund to the Capital Project number 100365, Sea Level Rise Recurrent Flooding Analysis, Ray Study of Marsh Island Restoration in Back Bay. Item C, $300,000 from Landmark Foundation to the FY 2020-2021 Public Health Operating Budget and authorize grant-supported positions, Ray Bay Care Program. Item nine A, ordinance to transfer 238,000 from the General Fund Reserve for Contingencies to the FY 2020-2021 Planning and Community Development Operating Budget to be provided to Hampton Roads Transit as a local match, Ray Micro Transit Demonstration Project, Virginia Beach West Pilot.
Are you open the public hearing on planning?
Under planning, item one, Gray Point Cove LLC and Sharon El Gray for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray Lotwith at 3108 Little Haven District, Lynn Haven District. Item two, Kenneth Stewart Proud, Mark and Crystal Proud for a change in nonconformity, Ray enlargement of existing dwelling at 228 Cavalier Drive in the Beach District, noting Mr. Moss's voting nay on that item. Item four, First Chinese Baptist Church for a modification of conditions, Ray religious use at 228 Pritchard Road in the Beach District. Item five, Maximo P. Akinde Jr. and Aiden Nearest O. Akinde for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home at 980 Avery Way in the Centerville District. Item six, Deion Johnson Sr. and Jessica Diaz Johnson for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home at 5150 Rugby Road in the Centerville District. Item seven, Toya Smith SST Holdings LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Assembly Use at 701 A South Military Highway in the Kempsville District. So I move, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Could we call the vote, please?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belushi is absent. Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, noting Mr. Moss's nay vote on item K2, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, moving on now to ordinances, resolution, item nine B. 4 million 850,000 from Capital Project number 100147, Dome Site Parking, and 4 million 375,000 from Capital Project number 10059, Resort Parking District to Capital Project 100146, Dome Site Entertainment Venue, Ray costs associated with the design and construction of the entertainment venue. Speakers?
We have two speakers. The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner will be Nancy Parker.
Is that item number?
Nine B.
Ah ha. Dome Site Venture Realty, Pharrell. You know, that Wave project, it's been changed, the name has been changed so many times. 4 million 375,000 from Capital Project 100059, Resort Parking District. It was parking. We had parking. It's been staging for construction. And now you want to build more parking garages. You just took all that, an entire square mile for the sports center. Everything is going all the way back to Bird Neck Road. So actually, 43 from Capital Improvement, let's see. But it starts out 4 million 850,000 from CIP. I mean, the construction at the oceanfront is extremely hazardous. a lot of the construction people, they get month-long passes. And they take up all the streets. There's no place for people to park if you don't live at the oceanfront. And get there at 5 o'clock in the morning. But then 5 o'clock in the morning is when that accident just happened. Okay, Dome Site Entertainment Venue. You're not in the business of entertainment. That's what Whisper Concert does, Cellar Door. They should pay for it. They should have their own venues. That's what Andrea Kilmer wanted. And they wanted us to pay for it. We already paid 78 million for infrastructure and that went towards the dome. The oceanfront used to be filled with nice families. It's not your job to use air money and air land and take away parking for us, for Venture, which is Napolitano, Sesums, Doug Ellis, Ellis Gibson. So, and they, they won. They, you know, they were picked by you. This is absolute insanity. Okay, is there any other ones, or is that it?
That's it, under ordinances, yes.
The next speaker is Nancy Parker.
Yeah, welcome Nancy.
Dear Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Nancy Parker and I live on 23rd Street. There are two areas of concern that need to be addressed on this project as it will have a profound and hopefully a very positive impact on the resort area. In reading the expansion of the lawn area for indoor entertainment, the potential for noise impacts on the surrounding residential communities created a moment of da jée vu. I was on the council when the amphitheater was developed and silver several of you. We were assured by the experts there would be no impact on the surrounding residential communities due to the design and construction. It was a nightmare for many of those that lived in the adjacent neighborhood until changes were made, which were not inexpensive. A major difference is the amphitheater is in the middle of a field. And the placement of this entertainment venue is in the center of a multi-use, including residential communities, with echo opportunities bouncing off the surrounding walls. Mike Culpepper did call me about a month ago in which he related some changes to the project, but nothing was available for public review at that time. I expressed continued concern about parking and the need for adequate parking for visitors as well as employees and construction workers. Additionally, as a representative to Ray Sapp and to Ramp for the resort beach civic league, I have been consistent in expressing the concern about employee nighttime parking in the residential communities. The briefing this afternoon by Deputy City Manager Williams revealed the parking spaces are being reduced from 1930 to 1650, if I heard him correctly. With the issue of the resort employee residential parking at night still up for consideration, that was not clearly addressed. The complex should be provide, provide all parking required for employees on-site with no other, unless there is another designated site, with no residential nighttime parking permits allowed. The complex will have the same hours as the rest of the resort business, which usually conclude at 2:00 a.m. with employees leaving after shift completion. The residential communities cannot be the overflow parking lot due to underestimation or evaluation of this major project. A public presentation of the new plan with the details would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, at this point, do we have a motion? Mr. Tower?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of item nine B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, okay. Open for discussion. Mr. Moss?
I'm going to make a substitute motion to decide on be deferred. As I said earlier in the workshop, I was going to make such a motion. But I'd like to explain it. I'm not going to deal with the substantive issues going back to the creation of the Dome Site. I think that is sunk cost. But I want to come back to a process question. Mrs. Nancy Parker, 20-year member of this body, and I thank you for your service, Nancy. But let's go back to March the 2nd, when this was all briefed in executive session. And at that time, my ability to participate was in question. But I've confirmed, as I mentioned earlier, that my position in Exxon has been reduced below the threshold and the Dominion Resources thing is behind me. So now I'm fully able to participate in this discussion. So when this came as a surprise to me on March 5th, not surprising I wasn't participating in that meeting on March 2nd, I did ask the city attorney if he could provide me a redacted version of the brief that was given on March 2nd and redacted to the public who's watching means information that if you filed a FOIA request, the city would have to provide. And it's amazing that everything that came in the packet on Friday was basically that information that was subject to public disclosure on March 2nd. So we really could have told the public on March 2nd and provided this information and not have violated any confidentiality. There was another opportunity last Tuesday during the treat when we briefed the Dome Site. Talked about how there was no spare money and how all the debt was consumed and all the projects. This could have been mentioned on that date, which would have been March the 9th, if my memory serves me correct. Now, if this was just about the money, that's another question. But this is also about the growth and the requirement. It's talking about the change of the siding. It's talking now about outdoor venue. It's changing the loading. So now we have land use implications that maybe don't impact the neighborhood. But guess what? The neighborhood didn't get notified in a meaningful way to participate. Now, in the course of all this, it's always the case, it's, oh, but we got to act now or we're going to lose an opportunity. It seems interesting, it's always the council's decision space and the public's decision space that gets consumed by others. But yet we seem to reward that behavior. So when you go back and look at this, so on the, generally speaking, things of major magnitude, our policy has been brief it one session so the public gets to see it and not just see it, but have time to think about it and then provide us feedback and then we vote. Well, apparently someone feels, in this particular case, Well, apparently, someone feels, in this particular case, the change is so minor, in the eyes of the beholder, and I recognize that honorable people can have honorable differences, that we can't afford the public that opportunity because we have to act so quickly. So that's the process part. Now, I'm not getting to the merits of whether or not we need a rescue music venue or not, but one of the concerns has always been, our number one threat to our community is flooding. So we consumed thirty million dollars of debt, our debt capacity, and decided that a music venue was more important in the near term than dealing with flooding. Okay, that's behind us. Now, this project takes nine point five million dollars of debt capacity that was allocated to parking and shifts it to this project. Now, we heard some discussions saying, well, maybe four point three million of that isn't needed because of the, we've re-engineered and the parking requirement went away, but no one has seen that analysis, that analysis has not been vetted, and I'm surprised that, to an earlier brief today, I suspect that was done by the developer. Well, where's the independent assessment of the parking requirement, so we're just wishing that away, I think. And then we're saying, oh, we're taking the other money from resort parking, but we put money aside in the past because we never knew what we needed for, but just in case. I never heard that during the budget review last year, that that was soft money that was available for the council to reapply elsewhere. It was much needed, but now it's, we can let it go, but sometime in the future, that debt capacity would have to be made available, which means we will have allocated another ten million dollars of debt capacity, it is a limited issue, that could go to flooding, that now we've dedicated to this project, and we haven't debated the merits of that. So I think this is getting a free pass on both the process thing and on the substantive review, and I don't think that's what people elected us to do, but I stand by my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the substitute motion? Yes?
Well, I, I have had concerns about this being a same-day briefing, and, which is why I'm seconding Councilman Moss's motion. I think we owe it to the public the opportunity to digest the information. I don't think that this decision is so urgent that it can't be deferred. I also think the optics of this right now are uncomfortable. You know, people are really struggling, and I have supported the dome project in the past, and I'm not saying that that's off the table for me, but the, the, the status of a lot of families right now, this is, this feels like putting a want over a need, and it concerns me, so, but I, I am, I'm seconding John's motion to defer because I do really think we should have afforded the public the opportunity to weigh in, because I'll tell you, I heard nothing about this item until the news article ran, and then I heard lots about it. So I think people would come out if we give them the opportunity, and I think that's our responsibility first.
I would like to amend my motion if I could, because I didn't specify when. As you know, in the email that I sent to all of you, I thought that we had did this once before where we took a workshop, and because we had a time-sensitive matter, it was in December, if my memory serves me correctly, we held a special session, I think it was at the close of the workshop, if I remember correctly, Mr. Mayor. So this would be a one-week delay, but would allow people that meaningful look, so I would, my motion would include that we hold a special session at the conclusion of our workshop on March twenty-third, because we've set that precedent before, and that would be the period in which the meeting would be held. I'd need a second for that.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on the substitute? Ms. Henley?
You're, you're going to have a special meeting next week just for this one item?
Yes, because we've done it once before in December. We actually, I forget what the issue was, but we have done it, and it's the best, if Mr. Tower says timing is the essence, and I'm taking, I've had his word, that there is a motivation here, at least people would have time now with the paper to look, and I think it would be, it's not the two weeks we normally would do, Barbara, you're absolutely correct, but it is splitting the difference to give people who want to share us a thought process, and without providing undue delay to what I understood was their move to need to move in April timeframe, if I read all the, in between the lines correctly, and we could accomplish both. That's what I was looking for, but yes, it would be just for that explicit purpose. Yes, ma'am?
I'm afraid that, I've heard some things that imply some things, that maybe if you had been in the briefings, you might have known otherwise. I would really look to our two liaisons to give us some guidance, if Mr. Tower and Mr. Jones would.
Okay, you know, Mr. Tower and then Mr. Jones, if you don't mind.
Just a couple of points. One, this is, it's been five years, I think, since this concept was developed for this entertainment venue, which we sought as being the key part of this development, and that was based on a fifty thousand square foot venue. I don't think I need to tell anybody what has happened to costs since that time, much less, and they've been at an increasing basis herein. This, I consider this to be still completely within the bounds of the concept of that. I admit, certainly there are, there are aspects of it that you can take, and I think, I'm particularly mindful of Ms. Parker's comments about the noise in the neighborhood, and all I can say to that is, if the studies that we insist on being conducted, and we will insist on them being conducted, show that the sound is, cannot be borne by the neighbors in any reasonable way, we won't do it. Well, that's yet to be determined. I don't think those studies have been done, but the folks that are advising us on this have done these types before, and they indicate that they are quite able under current technology to control the sound in a way that make it a venue that will exist very compatibly in an urban environment. I, I just am very reluctant to give up what may be a season's worth of revenue for further vetting. I don't think it's going to change minds. I could be wrong. You're right, I could be wrong, but I've discussed it with folks, and I kind of know where they're coming from, and I, I get it, and I think at this point, I'm convinced that the, moving some money from the parking bucket to the, to the venue bucket is reasonable, and in fact, could have been anticipated. I'm sorry, it didn't get done sooner so that we could have had it out there, but I don't think it's a surprising or unusual change that would require having to have a delayed vote on it. I'd like to go on and get it done because it is a timing issue.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, I agree with what Mr. Tower has said. I would comment that from the beginning, the, the valuation of the entertainment venue was, was an estimate, and that, and at the same time, the parking accommodations for this project have changed significantly, in that we no longer, we started out talking about building a parking garage over on the church property across the way, across, at the Methodist Church property. I was opposed to that, quite frankly, because I, I didn't think it was ever going to happen, and I thought it was going to hold up the project, and frankly, it did, for a good while, and finally, the reality set in that the church, that the Methodist Conference wasn't, wasn't interested in, in doing a parking garage with the city of Virginia Beach. So, that has changed, and money that was, that would have been spent, which was more than what we're talking about here, what is, is available for parking on the, onsite for the project, and in the end, my guess is, we're going to spend less on parking on this project than what we had estimated to start with. So, there's going to be some, there's going to be changes as we move forward, but I think it's time that we show good faith in what we're negotiating with the entertainment venue people who are working with us and with the developers here, and I would like for us to move forward.
Okay, any other questions or concerns at this point? You know, if I could say this, you know, for a long time, the dome site sat vacant, and we were able to come up with a plan that a lot of people bought into. No, controversial, sure. Anything is. We're looking at a wave park, we're looking at a entertainment venue. And let me just say, if something in the water proved anything, if you give stuff for people to do, you can change the character of the oceanfront with, you know, getting all kinds of people, you know, certainly the entertainment value will have many, many diversified acts that would satisfy many in the community. It would help make Virginia Beach a destination. You know, if you look at already the success of the sports center, we're looking at bolstering the convention visitors bureau, you know, this is, could be a vital, vital piece. Unfortunately, it was mentioned it took five years to get to this point, you know, for a lot of reasons, a lot of obstacles along the way. But let me just say, in terms of vetting and process, I think, you know, the folks at Venture did thirty-plus civic engagements, changes are necessary, you know, for a number of reasons, property acquisition caused changes of plans. We've been through a plethora of changes, but ultimately, this has the real potential to be the game changer that we all need. You know, as we look toward Atlantic Avenue revitalization, and just getting, making Virginia Beach welcoming to everyone that comes here. It's getting our own people, that residents, coming back to the beach, and people from seven five seven, that they can come out to a venue. And I just really think that if we're going to come be the city of yes, you know, we got to be, you know, positive and moving forward, so, you know, I just thought I'd pass that on. Okay, at this point, are we ready for the vote on the substitute motion? We are voting on the substitute motion to delay for one week, okay? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belugia is absent. Councilmember Henley?
No.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Wooton?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
No.
By a vote of two to eight, this motion has been defeated.
Okay, now we'll vote on the primary motion to approve. Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Nay.
Councilmember Belugia is absent. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to two, this ordinance has been adopted.
Okay, at this point, we'll call an open planning, open a public hearing on planning. The item to be discussed is number three, MS Virginia Beach LLC for modification of profits at twenty-two fifty-seven Willow Oak Circle, Ray, add forty-nine units to the three hundred and ninety-two units, District Five, Lynn Haven. Any speakers?
Yes, Rob Beaman is the attorney for the applicant. Switch it over to her.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, for the record, my name is Rob Beaman. I'm a local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant. This project involves the existing Marina Shores apartment complex located on North Great Neck and Lynn Haven Drive, which was originally developed in the late nineteen-eighties. The site currently has a tennis court in the southwest corner of the property that's underutilized by the current tenants, and given the popularity of the complex, the applicant would like to repurpose that portion of the site for a single residential building that would consist of forty-nine units and would otherwise be designed to match the existing buildings on the site. Another component of this project that I wanted to mention is that the site is currently non-conforming with respect to parking because it was built out in the nineteen-eighties. So as part of this project, we would add sufficient parking spaces onsite throughout the entirety of the site to bring it up to current codes. The applicant worked very closely with the Bayfront Advisory Commission on this application, and made two significant changes to our plans as a result of comments we received from that body. The first is that we moved the building farther off of the intersection by about eighteen feet, I believe, in, in order to save or preserve existing mature stand of trees along North Great Neck Road. Additionally, the applicant agreed to reduce the size of the building by one story and to eliminate eleven units from the project, and as a result of those two changes, the Bayfront Advisory Commission is supportive of this project. I did want to mention that I know the planning department has received correspondence from several folks along this corridor regarding traffic issues at, at Great Neck and Lynn Haven. I just wanted to point out with respect to traffic, according to our traffic engineers, this project is not anticipated to generate much in the way of additional traffic with just forty-nine units, and I know, according to the staff report, the traffic engineering department has had an opportunity to review this application, has not expressed concerns, and I believe has indicated that they believe the anticipated impacts are going to be minimal. In conclusion, the proposed building has been designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and the adjacent buildings on the site, and we have received a positive recommendation from the planning staff, the Bayfront Advisory Commission, and the Planning Commission. And with that, I appreciate your time, and we'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner, and then we have one additional speaker who had signed up originally via WebEx, Robert Glancy, but he is not on WebEx, but just wanted to check to see if he was here in attendance.
Welcome back, Ms. Messner.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer, Mayor Dyer. I need to bring up due process. It's, it should be hard to believe, but it's not, since I've been before y'all many times, that Mr. Moss is the only one that asked for a week. It shouldn't be a week. At one time, it was thirty days, sixty days. You violate due process all the time, and the retreat, there was a six-five vote. You can't vote at a retreat. Okay, there's been a lot of serious, even deadly accidents in that corridor. You know, to change and add units, you know, I oppose, plus, none of you talk about your conflicts of interest. A lot of you had conflicts on, with Venture. I mentioned those people. None of you abstain. The attorney for the developer is Troutman Pepper, that's Troutman Sanders. You know, there's major, major conflicts with, here, and we have too many apartments, condos, short-term rentals, and, yeah, I oppose it for, for a lot of reasons. Thank you.
The only other speaker that had signed up, Mayor, is Robert Glancy, and I do not see him online. Then, he is not in attendance. So, Mr. Beaman, would you like to come up for rebuttal? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the fact that, that there's nobody in opposition to it from the community indicates that it's indicative of the fact that they did reach out to the Bayfront Advisory Commission. I believe, I know I saw it at one meeting, I think y'all were at several meetings on this. If you look at the plan, there's significant landscaping, it's, it's below the A36 coverage that would be on this site. As I indicated, they worked with the BAC and modified the design based on the BAC's recommendation. Traffic, the traffic piece is something that people talk about a lot, but I have to say, when you take a look at the traffic generation numbers on this, this is one of the few roads, North Great Neck Road in the city, that actually operates below capacity, and we don't normally see that, and, and the additional traffic on this is, is fairly minor. One thing I would ask, ask the manager to do is, with the, the condos or whatever that went on the old dry storage site, and not necessarily this one, there was talk of traffic the old dry storage site, and not necessarily this one, there was talk of traffic, traffic signalization and changes, things like that. If you could get that back to me on that, because I've had some comments, people asking about what was going on with the traffic signalization in that, in that section there. So if you could ask that. But with all that, Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, the vote is open.
Councilmember Abbott?
Nay.
Councilmember Berlucia, I was absent, sorry. Councilmember Henley?
It was an aye.
The motion is to approve. Did she say aye? Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse?
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to two, this application's approved.
Okay, moving on to Expert Services LLC, Virginia Beach Investments LLC, for a conditional use permit, Raycar Car Wash Facility at 4937 Broad Street, District 4, Bayside.
Mr. Burdon?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, Honorable Members of City Council. For the record, my name's Eddie Burdon, I'm Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Expert Services LLC. It's certainly nice to be back and see everybody in person. This is an application by the owner of this property, whose parents own A&amp;G Auto Sales. The property in question is owned Unconditional B2 General Commercial District, which, as all of you know, permits scores of byright commercial and retail businesses. Some of those are a commercial kennel, an animal shelter, a childcare center, eating and drinking establishments, including takeout establishments, liquor store, all manner of personal service businesses, wine tasting rooms, and all manner of retail uses. Almost seven years ago, my clients leased this property to Forever Home, a large dog rescue operation, which was a commercial kennel use, a byright use. It operated here until September of 2019. This kennel housed scores of large dogs, mostly pit bulls, in the structure and the fenced-in rear yard on the south side of the building. Frankly, they were far, far from a stellar tenant, and my client is certain that the residents across the street, across Broad Street and in the vicinity of the property are, were very happy when they were finally evicted, which took well over a year. When my clients regained possession, my client regained possession, they, he had to expend over $40,000 on interior repairs and exterminating services in and around the structure. My clients still have to paint the exterior of the building, and that will happen later this year, and they will have to replace the roof within the next few years. My client was approached by a commercial kennel operator, not a dog rescue place, about leasing the property for a doggy daycare and kennel. However, my client felt that, given the experience that they'd just gone through and all the money they were having to spend, that, that was, they wanted to go in a quieter and cleaner direction. At the same time, his parents, A&amp;G, they have rented a space for a number of years, four blocks west at the end of Broad Street, but it's become untenable because the building, there's lots of spaces, and they've got some tenants that are problematic. And the Civic League's aware of that, and they're aware that we're not, my clients are getting out of there because it's problematic. So, the two kind of converged, and they said, well, even though this is clearly not the highest and best use for this piece of property, because it's family-owned, family situation, they thought this is, this is a good solution to the situation that they have and one that, again, they believe will be far better for the people who live in the vicinity. The Unconditional B2 exists along the entirety of the southern side of Broad Street in this area. To the west of the site is a large chain-length fence-enclosed vehicle storage yard. It's owned by Cycle World. To the south is another chain-length fence-enclosed storage yard with jet skis, motorcycles, along with structures that house repair and maintenance functions for Cycle World. To the southeast is the Rising Sun Boat Repair Business, and to the east is an undeveloped B2 commercial-zoned parcel. In the package that you all have that I handed out, there's an aerial photograph that kind of gives you the flavor of that, and I'll come back to the handout in a minute. With the exception of the structure on my client's property, there are no structures located on the south side of Broad Street in this block that are remotely residential in character, nor can any of those, or do any of those, host the extremely beautiful two large oak trees that this property does. And none of those properties can be used residentially, nor can my client's property be used residentially. Unfortunately, the washing of motor vehicles on a commercially-zoned property, which is not and cannot be occupied as a residence, such as this property, requires a conditional use permit under Section 228.1 of the zoning ordinance. A car wash facility is not defined in our CZO. Webster's includes a definition of a facility as a plant or an installation. Well, there's not any facility that's being proposed on this piece of property. This will not be a publicly available or usable operation, and they're really, like I said, there's no facility. We're not changing the building at all. We are going to plant a lot of landscaping and do a lot of other things, but there's no facility being constructed. The owner simply wants to, desires to lease the property to A&amp;G, his parents' corporation, to detail only their vehicles. No more than two employees will ever be on the site, one washing and one detailing a vehicle. The vacuuming and detailing takes place in the existing garage, which faces to the south, to Virginia Beach Boulevard. The washing occur, will occur by hand, directly behind the building. And I, again, in the handout, it's, I've marked it in pink, both the survey with the landscaping shown, but the survey, it's marked in pink, and it is also on the aerial photograph directly behind the building, south side in the fence-enclosed area. That's hand chamois dry. They will use a very small, electric-powered power washer because it reduces the amount of water usage. And again, one car at a time, same for the vacuuming and the detailing inside the garage. So, the subsequent to the public hearing before Planning Commission where they recommended approval, and I think there was a much better understanding gained from the community as to what this was and what it wasn't. We appreciate City Council deferring this item. It's afforded my client time to, along with Ms. Sampco and the Aragona Civic League, have a number of discussions and meetings, which I think have been extremely productive, and we appreciate the Civic League representatives and Ms. Sampco from spending the time and devoting the time to what we believe was a very productive dialogue. And again, we appreciate councils giving us the time for that to occur. And I want to mention that Mr. Fletcher, who's the GM at Cycle World, was on the Zoom meeting back in February, and I've spoken with him a couple of times. He is satisfied with everything we have done, most particularly the replacing of the fence with a wooden fence, fencing in the southern part of the property as it's currently fenced in mostly with a chain-length fence. Now, I provided you all with letters of support, which you all, I hopefully received yesterday, and also a set of proposed revised conditions that we worked through with Ms. Sampco and the Civic League. And we haven't been able to address every single item that they asked, but we've addressed a lot of them. Now, today, the City Attorney's Office through the planning department let me know that condition number one in what I sent to you all yesterday is a no-go, and referencing a specific business is a no-go. So what I provided to you all in the handout are revised conditions. They don't change a whole lot, but I want to go through them. The first condition just deals with basically landscaping that we've agreed to plant. That was original condition in this Planning Commission and staff's recommendation, and that's in the front of the, of the building. Number two, just limits that there will be no, this is additional, there will be no more than four vehicles parked within the fenced-and-gated area on the south side of the building at any one time. The parking area on the north side of the building, which has been there for years, shall not be used for parking vehicles to be or having been detailed for, detailed, nor for parking of vehicles of an employee who is detailing vehicles. So in other words, any employee vehicle is among the four that must be parked in the fence behind the building, nothing in front. And this next thing is, in no case shall the number of vehicles brought to the site to be detailed exceed eight on any day, or eight per day. And that was a compromise with Ms. Sampco and the Civic League. Number three, the vehicles being brought to the site to be detailed and taken from the site after detailing will utilize Virginia Beach Boulevard, Dorset Street, which is the street to the west of this block, and Rosemary Street on the east side of the block, and the one-block section of Broad Street between the intersection of Broad Street and those two streets. So, we won't have cars going up and down Broad Street, and that was something the Civic League asked us to include. Number four, the vehicles associated with the operation, employees or otherwise, shall not be permitted to park on any portion of the public right-of-way or the paved roadway driveway on the west side of the building. This was an original condition of the planning staff and Planning Commission. The second part of number four, which is a combination of two that were in yesterday's letter that I sent, the second part of this, the building onsite excluding the garage, excluding the garage, shall only be used to maintain and store files, paperwork, and office supplies used by the business. It can't be sublet for some other business. The onsite parking area in the north side of the building may only be used to temporarily park a vehicle of an officer or an employee of the company that is delivering files or picking up files or supplies. Right? So that's my 10 minutes. I want to, if you have any questions, the big things here are that Ms. Sampco was concerned about, that staff has addressed her numbers 11 and 12 dealing with stormwater. And lastly, if I could have one other moment, they, the Civic League asked us to condition this on just being for A&amp;G Auto, and that's exactly what my client intends. The property's value is such that it doesn't make sense for anybody else, and it won't. But I've added a note on the handout, and I want to-
Eddie, thank you, we got to be fair.
Well, I-
Okay, do you want to ask a question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for Mr.-
Burdon.
Burdon to finish-
Just call Eddie.
It's very, it's very important that the council understands that Mr. Burdon and Mrs. Sampco have been working together-
Okay.
-to, to come to terms on this issue, and I think, to the credit of both of them, they've done a great job, and I just wanted everybody to understand that, so.
Yeah, the district rep has, you know-
And I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Jones, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me correct Mr. Jones on one thing. Mr. Louie, Jason Louizu, the owner of this property, is the one who deserves the lion's share of the credit, along with Ms. Sampco and her board members. He did the heavy lifting. I consulted with him, gave him thoughts. But, but the one thing that, that they wanted that we're happy to give but cannot, because the City Attorney's Office opinion, that you cannot put a condition in here that mandates it can only be used by one operator, that it can continue on if they want to sell it to somebody else. My client has agreed to the note that's on the bottom, and I'm going to state this for the record. The owner of the property, the applicant, Expert Services LLC, hereby publicly and voluntarily expresses the intent to record, if this is approved, a private deed restriction in the land records maintained by the Clerk of the Circuit Court of the City of Virginia Beach, enforceable by any homeowner on the north side of Broad Street, which deed restriction expressly restricts the use of the property to detailing vehicles pursuant to this conditional use permit to Louizu Inc., trading as A&amp;G Auto Sales, for its vehicle. This vehicles, excuse me, this deed restriction will be recorded by the owner immediately upon the commencement of the vehicle detailing business pursuant to this conditional use permit. And a note that, per the City Attorney's Office, this is not a condition of the conditional use permit. It is a voluntary deed restriction that my client will put to record upon, if this is approved, and he's still got to go through the site plan and do all the drainage improvements, and that's really critical to this. It will be an expensive proposition, but all that engineering is yet to be done to deal with all the water staying onsite.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Thanks for your, thanks for your privilege.
Okay, good job. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. I don't have any questions. I just want to make a point earlier in your abbreviations, in your presentation on this particular application. I'm an avid dog lover. Love all dogs, all breeds of dogs. And as you mentioned earlier, this property was a commercial property, and some, some dogs ruined the property, wasn't worth taking care of. Well, any untrained dog can cause havoc, regardless if they're big or small. Trust me, I know some poodles, some shih-tzus, and some Pomeranians that can give Jurassic Park a run for his money. But when you mention pit bulls out specifically, it adds to the notion that somehow this dog is not worth, you know, the respect that it deserves. It's a powerful breed nonetheless, but I just, I just think we ought to be careful when we single out pit bulls as somehow as a, as a breed to kind of stay away from. Any dog, again, like I said, untrained dog can cause a problem. So I just, just wanted to point that out to you. Other than that, I thought you, you always give a great presentation.
And, Mr. Rouse, I very much appreciate that, and I accept that and actually concur with you. I, I was, I was at this property a couple of times, and you're right, it's not, it's not the dog's fault. Okay, I totally agree with that. Okay, it was the people running it, you know, that, and I did speak to the fact that the tenants were not good tenants and the dogs weren't the tenants.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But I do, I agree with you. It wasn't, I wasn't blaming the dogs, I was blaming the tenant, and if I didn't get that point across, I apologize. And I agree with you.
Good.
I love, I have dogs, loved dogs, always had dogs, so you're right.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
Barbara Messner. And then we have one additional speaker via WebEx.
Now, I'm very familiar with the property, and this brings up code enforcement, which is missing all the time. And for Mr. Rouse, there were a lot of problems with the people mistreating the dogs, and one of them, and the city allowed them to keep staying there, but one of them that was sold with, you know, one of those collars that, electric collars, he mauled and killed an elderly woman. So, you know, they, they were allowed to stay there too long, and they were abusing dogs. So, my concern is that every inch of land has to be commercialized. Everything you see, dollar signs. You know, this affects, you haven't fixed the storm drainage, water and sewer. Like I said, another car wash, I mean, the new one, you know, on Laskin Road, and that kangaroo thing, all of a sudden is a 7-Eleven. It's like Town Bank, 7-Eleven, it's like there's only one of everything. But no one, I've never seen anybody use it. It takes up all this nice land. That could have been a park. Has anybody ever thought of neighborhood parks for the kids? You know, why does a land have to be commercialized? Couldn't somebody build a park for the kids if the city's not going to do it, or, you know, all the parks you have, you know, the kids have to pay to go to? So, yeah, and, you know, it says staff denial, and a lot of these things that the attorney went over, you know, these are changes after the fact. And, you know, it's already been deferred, but he's adding things on. It's way over 10 minutes just for this one item. So, like I said, code enforcement should, could have taken care of this and other properties that, you know, aren't taken care of, and people that are, you know, it's like neighborhood I mentioned that before. Housing and neighborhood preservation, a lot of these places aren't being preserved for the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mayor, the only other speaker that was registered has actually dropped off, so, Mr. Burdon, if you would like to rebut. You have three minutes, three minutes for rebuttal.
Simply want to thank the council for, for giving us the opportunity and giving me the opportunity to speak beyond what I was allocated. I'm sorry for that, but I thought it was important to get the information out there. I'm sorry for that, but I thought it was important to get the information out there. Be happy to answer any other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I, before I make my motion, I just want to thank Mrs. Sampco of the Civic League for her, and her work and efforts in negotiating with Mr. Burdon, and, and coming together with terms that are, that are much better on this, on this particular application, and, and the indication from other people in the neighborhood that I have received, and calls that I have received, indicate that they're very appreciative of both of them, and the applicant, for their willingness to work together. So, with having said that, I move approval.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? We're open to the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, this application has been approved.
Okay, next item is Planning Item 9, North Legend Outfitters LLC slash Benjamin David and Brooke Harris Lindborg for a conditional use permit, Ray Home Occupation Retail Sales Firearms at 1017 Dartforth Muse, District 5, Lynn Haven.
The applicant, Benjamin Lindborg?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my name's Benjamin Lindborg. I'm the managing member for North Legend Outfitters LLC. First thing I'd like to say is this is actually a business that I've been running in Virginia Beach for the last four years with this same permit at a previous address. With that, I've been running this, this business in Virginia Beach with this permit with zero issues, and I have letters of recommendation from my previous neighbors. I know that the big orange sign in the yard with firearms on it is kind of scary to people, but everybody in the current neighborhood that I've talked to and actually explained the business to, their concerns all seem to have been alleviated after I explained what I actually do. So, I'd like to explain to you guys what I actually do as well. It's a very small-scale business, by appointment only. I am in the military, I work only with members of the military as well. They're all highly trained, qualified individuals that I have extreme confidence will, will pass these stringent background checks by both the Virginia State Police and the ATF before I even invite them over to my house, because they are, again, coming into my home. I am the only employee of the business, and the only, only one with access to the safes or the ability to run the, the background checks on the individuals. Some months I have zero customers, some months I have as many as four. So, again, I'm very small-scale. Parking for all the customers during their brief stay, which is usually 20 minutes or less, is, is actually on the premises in the driveway, so nothing is, is taking place on the actual public roads. All items that I obtain for people are stored in a plate steel safe comparable, comparable to safes that banks use to secure large amounts of cash. So, storage is highly secure and impenetrable without sophisticated professional tools and an extended amount of time, as well as the electronics security measures as well. Once the orange permitting sign is taken down, there's gonna be nothing visibly perceptible from the street to suggest any sort of business, whether firearms or, or not, any sort of business at all. Once the sign's taken down, it will be totally imperceptible from the road. It will be completely seamless and unnoticedful to the normal, quiet, and peaceful pattern of life in the neighborhood. There are no, no signs, no advertisements, no marketing or desire for increased market share, and I'm not open for walk-ins. Again, it's only by appointment only, and only by individuals that I'm willing to invite into my home, and that I know will pass the, the stringent background checks. There's no increased delivery traffic to the neighborhood. Packages all require adult signatures and are picked up at a different address, UPS address off-site. So, when they come onto the site, they're in my vehicle and taken directly into the garage, never in, in view of the public. Under no circumstances are delivery services allowed to leave packages with sensitive items on the porch. That is, that is illegal by both state and federal rules. Firearms are never loaded, fired, or tested on the premises in any manner. Again, it's mostly just a, a pass-through entity doing the background checks and whatnot for, for the individuals picking up their, their firearm. Firearms are carried in and out of the business in discreet manufacturers' packaging or cases. Open firearms or brandishing of firearms is never allowed on the, on the property. Again, customers are instructed to park in the driveway, out of view of the street, and everything is done on the premises. Vehicle, packages are loaded into the vehicles on the premises as well. I have no plans to expand anytime in the near future. Again, I have a, a day job with the US military, and I don't really have any desire to do more than a few a month, which is why I don't have the overhead to go open a commercial space to conduct this, this business. With the increased federal restrictions coming down, this kind of helps facilitate and gives guys in the military a discreet and legal way to, to do their transfers. I am consulting with the Virginia Beach Police Department Crime Prevention Unit as required by the permit. They're, they're gonna come out and do a site assessment as well. Penning any questions? That's all I have.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, I just have one. So, what, what exactly do you, do you do? Do you modify? Do you sell? Like, what, what exactly do you do?
Mainly, I just do the, the transfers, so the legal ATF, the background check is mostly what I do. I do have the ability to do some minor gunsmithing work, you know, putting, putting different stocks or scopes, things like that together, putting, putting them on the, on the guns. But mainly, all I've done in the, in the last four years is just, just the transfers.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, any other speakers?
Christopher Tolton is the next speaker, and after Mr. Tolton will be Barbara Messner.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for listening to me. My name's Christopher Tolton. I'm a block captain in the neighborhood where, where Ben is and Brooke are living. I'm also a former police officer, a former naval officer, and a former Secret Service As the block captain, I had a couple of neighbors come to me when the sign went up, and told me that they were kind of concerned because it saw the word firearms on there. So, I went and conducted a quick check of the current Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Regulations and Laws. I checked to, to see the city code and see what, what was applicable and what was, what was not. I also did a brief check of his previous business location and his previously submitted back four years ago when he opened up his business and his, his business plan and business model. So, after that, I went and I spoke with Ben about it. Very nice, just moved into the neighborhood recently, wants to be a good neighbor with everybody. He works for a very, he's a military member at a highly trained unit, and he mentioned me that his only, his sole direction of conducting this business was to help out some of his Navy teammates. So, he's mentioned everything that Ben just mentioned. Business is very low-key. He doesn't hold any inventory onsite. All the deliveries are done off of location. He doesn't hold AMO stores. He doesn't have any of the things that people would want to possibly go into his residence for. Like he said, it's a pass-through, through entity. After I spoke with him at length, I contacted one of the Architectural Review Committee Chairman, and he said that he had already previously been contacted by Ben several weeks earlier. So, Ben was reaching out, trying to do the right thing by the homeowners association. I could tell you this, from my previous experience with the Secret Service and in the Navy, this unit is far none amongst the best in the world. I don't have any personal issues with him conducting his business as he has laid out with the restrictions that he's mentioned and the regulations that are in place, both through ATF and city ordinance, ordinance, and his limitation of only do, doing four transactions a month. So, he gave an excellent presentation to the planning board, I think it was 10 to nothing on the board score. You've got whatever it was written down there. But they asked him a whole series of questions-
Thank you, sir.
-to answer them. Yes, sir.
And thank you for your considerable service to our country.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner, we have one via WebEx, Mary Cartledge.
How was the council meeting? I think it was 2017 when somebody wanted to have firearms sales in their neighborhood, and there's also some signs at Hilltop, you know, where people are selling firearms. Could you put the actual house picture up there, please? Okay. Um, yeah, I just have questions that I think I would like for y'all to ask, because I just, I don't understand why his fellow people in the military would have a hard time getting, you know, buying these weapons anywhere else. It just, I don't know. Plus, when you go public like this, a lot of people, you said it, they come to your house, but then it's delivered somewhere else. It's, it's all just really strange and confusing, but another thing I'd like to address to Mayor Dyer and Mr. Wood, I don't appreciate being discounted because I don't live in a certain neighborhood. I've lived in a lot of neighborhoods, and what goes on in every neighborhood, whether it be public safety, traffic, you know, people don't just stay in their homes, that a lot of them have to now. But I happen to pay attention to what goes on in my city, and I don't like the crime. So, I just think a couple more questions need to be asked, and if he's helping people in the military, I just, you know, I know some other people that do the same things with the business, so I'm just opposed to too many home businesses in the neighborhood, and you've allowed, this doesn't affect this one, but you allow people to have their work vehicles, and it's ruining the neighborhoods. That doesn't apply to this one, but I'm just bringing it up because this is the last item on the agenda, and I hope you'll answer, ask some of the questions. Thank you.
The next speaker is via WebEx, Mary Cartledge. Ms. Cartledge, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak in opposition to the proposed gun sales business in Middle Plantation. In 1982, when my husband and I were looking for a neighborhood in which to build our forever home, we were, we were drawn to Middle Plantation for the lovely trees, large lots with stately homes, good schools, and most importantly, a quiet, safe place in which to raise our family. When we purchased a lot, we were given deed restrictions by the developers. The fourth restriction was one which prohibited any commercial business that increased traffic from being conducted in the neighborhood or could become a nuisance to the neighbors. Fast forward to 2021, and we can fully appreciate the wisdom of the developers. Middle Plantation is one of several premier neighborhoods in the city, with 450 homes that generate approximately $3 million in real estate taxes. Young families are drawn here for the same reasons we were, and many of the original owners are still here as we age in place. Turnover of homes is infrequent. We have a very low crime rate. Residents still follow the guidelines laid out in the deed restrictions, and when there are lapses, the Civic League, with an 80% participation rate, invokes them to bring about compliance. I was shocked when I saw a picture on the neighborhood website next door of a sign for a firearm sales variance on Dartford Muse. Not only would it establish a business in a neighborhood that prohibits them, but engages in selling deadly weapons. Perspective buyers will have to drive approximately one and a half miles from the front entrance of Middle Plantation to Dartford Muse, which is in the very back of the neighborhood. The planning commission followed the steps required by law, but they are designed to keep this action very quiet. Thus, very few of our residents know about this. I do not believe a gun dealership is compatible with a family neighborhood. There are more than 25 retail gun shops in our area that can fulfill these online orders and do background checks. There is more than ample opportunity for anyone wishing to purchase a weapon. Additionally, by allowing one business, you will open the door to other businesses and a general decline in compliance with our deed restrictions, which have been observed successfully for 40 years. Please, come and have a drive through our beautiful neighborhood and decide for yourselves. Observe lots of kids and families on bikes, summertime block parties, neighborhood holiday parades, and cookie giveaways for the kids, dog walkers, folks getting exercise on the bike paths, and then visualize guns being sold in the midst of such a scene. It just doesn't fit, so.
Mr. Lindborg, would you like to come up for rebuttal? You have three minutes.
All right, again, I'd like to express how small-scale of a business this is. Again, the conditional use permit limits it to four or less per month. I'm very aware with the, the Nextdoor app discussion that was going on, and, and Ms. Cartledge's opinions, where she fully admitted on the actual site that it wasn't the fact that it was a business, like she says, it, it's the guns. So, it's, it's her personal preference versus mine. Most of that was all very politically and emotionally driven, with most of it coming from outside of our neighborhood. As far as the, the deed restrictions, I'm not proposing anything that's in, in violation with the actual published restrictions of, of Middle Plantation. What, what they put out is that nothing perceptible from the street, no business perceptible from the street, so again, no signs, no marketing, no one actually able to see firearms from the business, so, yeah. Penning on, penning any questions? That's, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I live 2.3 miles from, from his house, based on, I just looked it up on my map, driven through the neighborhood many, many times, rode my bike through the neighborhood many, many times. You know, Ms., Ms. Cartledge brought up the fact, the issues of the deed restrictions, and that was brought up at a Civic League meeting I attended. And the homeowners association has every ability to enforce those deed restrictions to, to their ability, but that's not an issue for the city. She, she mentioned the other thing, she said, "Designed to keep this quiet," she used that phrase. Well, we're designed to keep every home-based occupation quiet, so it doesn't, doesn't disturb, disturb neighbors. Ultimately, this doesn't change the character of the neighborhood, doesn't increase traffic. The, the applicant has, has imposed additional, self-imposed restrictions beyond what, what would ordinarily be required. I, I think it's, there, there's absolutely nothing wrong with, with this as a land use item, so I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, this application has been approved.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our coun, our country. Really appreciate it. Point of pride, thank you. Appointments, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals to boards and commissions. To the Bayfront Advisory Commission, Frank Rubina. Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, Councilmember Aaron Rouse.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Because, because Vice Mayor, you just said you ride a bike through the neighborhood, so I'm thinking you would be better suited.
Nope, nope, I've got other things, but I appreciate the offer.
All right, just wanted to check and make sure.
Nice try, Aaron.
That, that, that was a very good try.
I'll tell you.
That was almost as good as the City Manager Cincinnati joke, but you didn't quite get there. To the Community Services Board, Joan Wood- To the Community Services Board, Joan Wood and Luke Robertson. Deferred Compensation Board, to the Director of Finance, Latisha Shelton. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Al Henley. To the Old Beach Design Review Committee, William Allman. To the Personnel Board, Larry Shackelford as a full member, Ruby Christian as a full member, Mayor and employee. Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia, Catherine McVeigh. To the Transitionary Interfacility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee, Councilmember Barbara Henley.
Okay, open for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Louizu is absent. Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you've appointed those nominated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business? If I could just make, you know, one quick announcement. Tomorrow is the State of the City, St. Patrick's Day, and it is my hope that everyone that, you know, views this will regard this as a "we" presentation, that it gives tribute to councils present and past. We as a body have been through much together, and we've gone through it together. And hopefully, you're going to find this as a, like I said, a tribute to the work that we have all put into it and the positivity that we're going to look forward, going together, looking at a bright future. So I just wanted to thank everybody for making Virginia Beach such a great city that it is. Thank you, and God bless all of you.